Okay, good evening. My name is Brian O'Connor.
Hello?
Hello? Now we're gonna start. Good evening. My name is Brian O'Connor. I am the chairman of the Planning Commission. It is February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is six oh one, and I'm calling this meeting to order. I'd first like to do a roll call and announce the elected members to speak up as present, as your name's called. Paul Aurelia.
Present.
William Boyd.
Present.
Sarah Graham.
Present.
Alec Macola.
Present.
We are also joined by two of our alternates, Tammy Lynn Morse.
Present.
And Brian Sturbis.
Present.
We'd also like to welcome Suss Smitha Tata, our town planner.
Hello, everyone.
And Aileen Marsh, our recording secretary. We also have a guest here, Bruce Jackson, a town attorney. Thanks for showing up. And we expect Harold Watson to show up a little while later. I'd like to remind everyone that we have no public hearing items to review tonight during the meeting. If you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please raise your hand. I will call upon you to speak up. Please identify yourself by name and title each time you'd like to speak. The public is free to listen, but may speak only at the invitation of the chair. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes, meeting minutes from January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. That's organizational in regulation meetings. Can I get a motion to approve these minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Paul Aurelia.
Thank you, Paul. Can I get a second?
Second, Commissioner Macola.
Can I get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Unanimous. Thank you. The second, or really the first item to bring to everybody's attention is Section Three zoning commission referrals. This is in reference to a text amendment on Section three point three self-storage facilities moratorium.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on that.
Thank you.
And that is that we approve the text amendment language to put a twelve-month moratorium on self-storage facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Aurelia. Can I get a second on that?
I'd like to second that motion. Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
Actually, Commissioner Boyd, I had a question. What was the moratorium now? We said a moratorium, but we didn't give it a time?
Put a year moratorium on, well, one-year moratorium.
Okay, so his motion was for twelve months? That's correct. Right.
Off your mics.
Oh.
Just procedurally, I think you cannot approve directly without a discussion. So first, you have to open the item for discussion, pass the motion, and second, and then open it up for discussion, and then, you know, pass a motion to approve.
That's correct. So this was just a motion towards a twelve-month moratorium, which we had seconded by Ms. Graham. Now it would be open to discussion, and then we could make the vote if everybody, at the end of the discussion.
So Commissioner Boyd, District Two, my question was, under the three-point six and three-point three-three, what was the moratorium presently? How long was it for?
Okay, there's currently no moratorium on it, I don't believe. It's, this is a, making a recommendation to put the twelve-month moratorium on it, and we're opening up the discussion for Suss Smitha at this point to give us some more background on it, and then we can open it up for that full discussion, questions, and then move on to make a vote.
Thank you, Chairman, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a petition of Stratford Economic and Community Development Commission seeking a moratorium on self-storage facilities in Stratford. As you can see in the background documents provided by them, they did an analysis of how many self-storage facilities were approved in recent years and a total square footage of how much this is right now in Stratford. So based on their analysis, we approved roughly three hundred and forty thousand and nine forty-four square feet of self-storage facilities in Stratford since two thousand and seventeen, which is like three facilities. One at seven seventy-one to eight forty-five Barnum Avenue Cut Off, right across Burlington Code Factory. One in Lordship, at two twenty-five Lordship Boulevard, and the other one is at one oh four to one oh eight East Main and fifty Sidney Street, which is right by Stop and Shop on, you know, that side of Stratford. So the petitioner has been looking at these more closely, and they feel like, you know, this is not in sync with our plan of conservation and development goals and objectives, especially for our economic development areas, because typically these self-storage facilities that you see are single-use, large facilities on occupying the site and with a lot of parking, and more traffic-oriented, automobile-oriented, and there is no place-making and vibrancy associated with such facilities. Especially when you look at the facility across from Burlington Code Factory, you notice that this property is in our TOD overlay district, and the TOD's goal is to promote transit-oriented development with mixed-use density. But because these facilities are allowed as of right in our CA business zone, you know, these can, these get approved in lieu of TOD-style buildings that we envisioned for this corridor within the transit-oriented district overlay zone. So right now, what we are requesting as staff and supporting the petition is that you place a moratorium for twelve months on these, on this section that allows it, which is Section three point three, so that we can more closely review our P O C D goals this year, as we are working on our Plan of Conservation and Development update, and identify locations where these are more appropriate in the town, and if the town needs any more or not to determine that when we come to this end of the twelve-month moratorium.
Thank you, Suss Smitha.
And I also, I'm sorry, I want to add one last but very important piece, that the proposal is consistent with the objectives of the two thousand and thirteen Town Plan of Conservation and Development, as stated in the staff report.
So essentially going along with what Suss Smitha is saying and giving my version of the summary, there's currently three storage facilities in the town of Stratford. Based on the information we've been given, you know, again, there's a recommended square footage per person in the town. We have over fifty-two thousand residents of the town, so essentially there's three hundred and seven thousand five hundred square feet necessary or recommended or industry standard, however you want to call it. And at this point, we have three hundred and forty thousand square feet of storage available to us. And the recommendations come to us that we put a one-year moratorium that gives us time to plan, make sure we have, you know, that this, the square footage we have is adequate. And also, we could, you know, we have the upcoming task of updating our P O C D. It could give us some time to knowledgeably put that into the P O C D and how we want to plan around it. Do you, does anybody have any questions, or anybody want to have any input based on the information that we've been provided? William?
William Boyd, Zone Two. The question I have is, they don't report, obviously, vacancy. We have storage units, but they don't report if they're at capacity. Is there a point where Mary Dean, I believe, submitted this? Is there a report as to there are other builders looking to bill? Like, we're putting a moratorium because we're getting flooded with requests? Or we feel we reached a saturation point? I wasn't sure. I believe, I agree, we should do a moratorium, but what is the reason? Are we flooded with requests to build more?
I'll refer that to the town planner. Do you have any knowledge on, you know, the capacity that they're at currently? I know you had mentioned the one on Burlington, by Burlington Code Factory, but the other two, do you know the capacity that they're at at this point?
So I do not know, numbers-wise, if there is occupancy at eighty percent or ninety percent. But I can tell you that the one across Burlington Code Factory, seven seventy-one to eight forty-five Barnum Avenue Cut Off, that property owner is, you know, seeking to place temporary self-storage containers on the side of his property, you know, where there's land. And it's like, he went before B Z A for the variance, and now they're going to be heard at the zoning commission, I guess, on February twenty-third for this facility's expansion. And I also heard from my peers in the profession, like in Milford and in Norwalk, everywhere there's people approaching them with self-storage facility developments. That's because, based on what you see right now, like many people are either moving out of town because of COVID and they want to store, or, you know, there are some evictions. I know there was a moratorium on evictions until now, but, you know, people who choose to downsize, they're placing in the storage buildings. I don't know how many of these are used by Stratford residents only versus how many are used by out-of-towners, which will be interesting to know, if, you know, they're all being used by only residents or non-residents too. But nevertheless, in terms of saturation point, by square footage and by capacity that is allowed, we have reached that threshold, and it is safe to say that placing a moratorium and revisiting the goals through the P O C D lens is not a bad idea for this one.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions?
No, thank you for the answer.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments, discussion?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, Paul Aurelia. And that's that we approve a twelve-month moratorium for self-storage facilities. I find the reasons compelling, so.
Thank you. Take a second.
I agree, so I'd like to second the motion. Commissioner Graham.
Thank you. We've already discussed this at length, so I think we could put this to a vote. Can I just get a show of hands all in favor of this?
Yes.
No, but can I please interrupt once? Again, procedurally, you should say motion to recommend to zoning commission to approve. You're not approving it, but you're recommending zoning commission approve it.
Very good. So I'd like to amend that motion to be that we recommend to zoning commission to approve this text amendment language for the one-year moratorium.
Can we get a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, aye. Any opposed? Unanimously, thank you. We will recommend that motion. Yeah. It's all good. We're swimming along right now. So next item on the agenda is item five. It's referring to eight dash twenty-four. It's the review recommended from the town, referred, rather, by the town council. It's a potential acquisition in lieu of taxes of railroad spur near Long Beach Boulevard owned by American Premier Underwriters. Again, we're gonna start off, assuming that everybody, you know, read the materials, we're gonna start off. Can we get a motion, or do we have a motion for this item?
I, I'd like to make, Paul Aurelia, I'd like to make a motion that we open this item for discussion.
Thank you.
Didn't take long.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Macola. All right, at this point, we're gonna open up this discussion. We have Bruce Jackson, the town attorney. I'd like to invite you to kind of give us a background on how this came to the agenda and just help us understand a little bit better.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think this is on, right? Bruce Jackson, Assistant Town Attorney, Town of Stratford. So we were asked a long time ago to look at foreclosing on the, what was called American Premier Underwriters, which owned the railroad spur that runs effectively from two roads down to the marsh. When we started looking at the details, we realized that we, our tax assessor had us, had them owning a number of acres of land, but in fact was a combination of land ownership, but also easements, rights of way, other things that weren't foreclosable. So we started going, investigating some. The American Premier Underwriters took the position they didn't own it. They said, what are you talking about? We have no idea. Did some research, and back in about the nineteen seventies, when the railroads were being reorganized and Penn Central became basically Conrail, there was a deed that transferred all of the property that was owned by one, except the legal description of the property didn't include our little railroad spur. So American Premier Underwriters, which bought out of the Penn Central bankruptcy all of the assets, ended up with a piece of property, in my opinion, that they owned the use rights to the railroad. After nagging them incessantly for years, they've agreed to quickclaim it to us. But Section eight twenty-four of the Connecticut statute says the Town of Stratford cannot, no municipal, can take a property or give a property without the planning commission's review of that process. So I come before you to say, we've gotten American Premier Underwriters to give us whatever rights they may have in the property. We had looked at, we'd done a title search, and it was not clear. In order to be really clear, we'd have to do a survey, an updated search, which was gonna cost tens of thousands of dollars. It's not gonna buy us anything. Partly, if American Premier quits, claims it to us, it isn't a perfect deed in the sense that I couldn't argue that no one else is gonna do it, but no one's argued for the last forty years, so I sincerely doubt that anybody's gonna pop their head up and say it's ours. What it gives us is the Town of Stratford would then control the spur, which I'm not gonna go into the, we're not going into the business running a railroad, but at this point, we have a, we're accruing taxes for a property that we have no way to stop. They're never gonna pay them. I have no way to foreclose without knowing which rights are which. It's gonna cost us more to foreclose it than it's worth, so the idea would be, we get this property. Now, some benefits are, there's a project down by the marsh, right? For which we actually could use a portion of the berm. So this actually is fortuitous that we don't have to go get them to give us just that parcel. They'll give us whatever rights they have, and they don't want to hear about it, hear from us again. So does the town want this railroad spur? Anything else?
Thank you. Just to continue on what Bruce Jackson had mentioned about the, you know, the positive uses that we have in the berm and water conservation, Suss Smitha, if you don't mind, can you elaborate on that?
Sure. So based on what town attorneys mentioned, this is an absentee landlord and who doesn't even know how much of property he owns in the town, and he's not willing to pay taxes, but he's willing to transfer the rights to the town. The benefit to the town is that, you know, Stratford is a coastal community, and Stratford has a coastal resilience plan, and the coastal resilience plan has recommendations for flood mitigation measures such as flood walls, levees, and berms along the eastern side of the town and by the south near Lordship. In some places where these rights are given, maybe we could use those rights to implement those strategies in the near future. For example, I know, like, in two thousand and twenty, I think, we reached out to town attorney Bruce Jackson right in the middle of COVID, when we were all on rotating schedules, because NOAA was doing a project to restore, NOAA meaning National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration. They were doing a project to restore the Great Meadows Marsh area, and they reached out to the town to ask if they have, if the town has any concerns. The first thing that came to our mind was that maybe we can implement the coastal resiliency measure proposed for this area simultaneously while they're doing this work. So we reached out to the property owners nearby. One is the five fifty Lordship Boulevard. I think it's owned by Jim Casey, Stratford Land Development Company. And then we also talked to the owner of Myers Corporation, his neighbor. Both FedEx property is above the base flood elevation, so it's on a higher ground, but Myers property floods very badly whenever there is coastal sea level rise or tidal inundation. So they were willing to work with the town in implementing this coastal mitigation measure, but we still needed rights that are owned by A P U, by the railroad spur, behind these properties in order to implement this strategy. In the absence of courts, the courts were closed at that time, we could not obtain these rights, and that, you know, proposal never moved forward. But I think this gives the town an opportunity to not just look at that area, but to look at the other areas as well, where we are abandoning the rights, to see if any of the strategies that are recommended in the plan could be conceptually, you know, advanced to the next level of planning and implementation. And I think that's a benefit for the town in many ways, and also that you're now not having to take the burden of an absentee landlord in the town. It is also consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development, as mentioned in the staff report. There are three items particularly of interest that I specified, that, you know, it helps to protect lives and property on coastal waterways, to protect and enhance areas with significant topography from runoff and degradation. And P O C D Plan of Conservation and Development also has this objective which states, acquire land and conservation easements to provide upslope advancement zones to accommodate rises in water levels adjacent to tidal marshes and in riparian areas adjacent to cold water streams. So depending on where this property rights are and where it floods, we can, you know, based on the survey that will be provided at a later date, we can look into this and more closely examine where are the areas that we could utilize for upslope advancement.
Thank you. So, you know, based on the presentation of Bruce and also Suss Smitha, there's been a lot of positive things and very few negative things. It's definitely consistent with the current P O C D. It allows for opportunity. At this time, just kind of open discussion for everyone else. Do you have any questions while we have Bruce here? Or do you have any questions for Bruce, or do you have any questions for Suss Smitha regarding this rail spur or anything? That's, that's pretty good. So right now, the council's looking for a recommendation from us to acquire this rail spur.
Okay. Paul Aurelia, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend the deed swap for this rail spur piece of property.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second that motion. This is Commissioner Graham.
Thank you. Again, we'll.
Have a question. I thought we did a quickclaim deed already. I thought we already owned, we already did that.
If I may, no, that's the proposed deed to us. I can't accept it until you refer to the council, and the council says yes. They're just saying, if we needed it to you, here's what it would look like. Thank you.
So again, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve and send to the town council our recommendation to acquire this rail spur.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
William Boyd, District Two, seconds it.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. I'm gonna put it to a vote, because we've discussed this at this point. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Unanimously, thank you. Thank you for your time. We appreciate your time. Thank you. That, those were the two items on the agenda that really required us to make a motion and a ruling on. At this point, we're moving down the agenda to just the Greenways and Complete Streets Committee. We've invited Harold Watson, who has kindly shown, shown up. Harold Watson, again, is the chairman for the Greenway and Complete Streets Committee. First, thank you for your time. I know your time is precious, so thanks for showing up. Second, just, you know, obviously, there's a lot of new members up here, and you're doing a lot of work. It is for the town, so can you just bring us up to speed on the Greenway and Complete Streets Committee? And, you know, what, what you guys are working on and where we're at?
I will try my best. I, Suss Smitha gave all of you a copy of the minutes of the last Greenway. That should give you some sense of what we're, where we're trying to go. We're trying to set up a several-point agenda for the rest of the year to move us forward, because there's two projects that we really are moving forward with that are gonna be great projects. Let me just back up all the way. This is my sixth or seventh year of working on the Greenway. Before I was involved with any politics, I was the volunteer in the room for a couple of years. Then I became an alternate, then I became a member, and eventually I became the chair. The Greenway Committee and Complete Streets Committees were both separate committees. The Greenway Committee was a subcommittee of planning. That goes back, I think, probably as far as nineteen eighty with Joe Vessi, who was originally a chair of the, of the Planning Commission when they started it. So I walked in on really the wisdom of planning as it pertains to the Greenway with Joe and a couple of other people who were long-term members. But I also walked in as they began to leave, and essentially, the Greenway Committee fell apart. We were not having monthly meetings. We weren't even having quarterly meetings. There really was nothing happening, at the same time that the town had undertaken a huge investment in complete streets in terms of developing our network of complete streets townwide. So it was really a shame. And then on top of it, we had COVID, which made it even worse. So essentially, with Suss Smitha's help, we, we reorganized both committees as one committee. Both of them are under-planning, so they're, we directly report to you guys. It is a ten-member committee with varying terms, overlapping terms of four years, and each person can have a double term according to our bylaws. That's one of the things we did. We wrote a set of bylaws, which are probably the most complex, the most complete bylaws of any committee in town. So, but we finally got through that, and we ended up with, I think, a really good set of bylaws. All of this is available on the website, under Planning, under Greenway Complete Streets. You'll find copies of that. We also wrote up a ordinance of complete streets that we got passed by planning and then town council, and then the mayor signed it. So we now are official Complete Streets town. We have a complete streets policy that is equal to any place in the country. But the problem was, it's just a document if we don't do anything. So one of our first points in meeting, reconstituted in the Greenway, was for us to begin working on what should be an annual report. So we are now, just now, starting that. But considering we just began again in January, I think we're doing pretty well with that. What I've tried to do as chair of the Greenway Complete Streets is to take our ten members and task each of them with special projects. So we have two people on our committee that are working specifically on this report. Eventually, they will go with, go to speak with Suss Smitha and with John Casey to get the additional information we need. But it will include things like a report from the chief of police of where bicycle accidents are happening in Stratford, of where there are danger points and things like that, data that is really hard to come by. And honestly, the chief of police is changing their collection of data for us so that we can actually have access to this kind of information. They're changing the reports to indicate, was a bicycle involved in this accident? So we'll actually, within the next year, begin having real, honest-to-God data, which will inform us when we decide where we need to put the most attention to bicycle routes. So I'm going to suggest, and believe me, I said this to the committee this past week at our meeting. There are a lot of documents up on the planning zoning website that deal with complete, complete streets and the Greenway. Our Greenway started in nineteen seventy-nine, so there's a lot of studies that have been done as early as two thousand and nine of planning for Greenways. And while we've gotten funding for our Todd Complete Streets section, we're now working on the next section of that, which will go from Barnum Avenue up to Paradise Green. These both were done under a conceptual design project that was done, I think, three and a half years ago that was, had heavy townwide involvement in when we determined what we were going to do for those. We are now, thankfully, we've now gotten. We are now, thankfully, we've now gotten funding, I believe, I don't know if it's premature to say it, we've now gotten funding for this next phase, what we're calling the Paradise Green Phase, which runs up that, so that we can begin the first engineering design drawings. We have a conceptual design, but now we need to go back and get engineering. And now it's been three and a half, four years later. So some of the requirements have changed, I think, for the better for Stratford. Um, one of the things that, when we started the Complete Streets, which will run from two blocks, uh, this side of Stratford Avenue, along Main Street up till a half a block before Barnum, that air, that is 95% complete. 99% complete. So we are just ready to go out for a bid to begin building. We have funding for that, correct? So we're funded for that. We're ready to go as soon as we get the final sign-off from the Department of Transportation. That's been the bugaboo for Stratford and will continue to be our problem because we have so many state roads. Those roads are also where we have the most right-of-way, where we can actually build safer bike lanes and safer, um, multimodal transportation ways. So we also have gotten funding for the next phase, correct me if I'm wrong, for the Paradise Phase. We also have the Department of Transportation interested in our Ferry Boulevard link. Uh, all of these are, are plans that, some of them go back 10 or 15 years. So if you go into the, the P O C D and look, you will see all of our projected and anticipated, um, routes that go from the north to the south. It goes through every neighborhood because it's designed, we were really ahead of our, of the time. Now, it's considered to be a requirement almost. But we were, our initial designs were trying to connect all of our schools to a Greenway path that somewhere, so that kids could get safely or safer from points in town by being on a Greenway versus in the middle of the street. So those trails, if you look in your neighborhoods, you'll see somewhere nearby, there are anticipated trails in the P O C D as it exists now. But as you guys are know, are learning, the P O C D is right at the point of being rewritten for the next 10 years. So hopefully, you guys can depend upon the Complete Streets, Greenway Committee to do some of that work for you. And that's one of our other targeted projects for this year, is for us to say which of these, um, which of these design ideas are still, are still, uh, suitable, are still doable, are still something that we should keep on our map and say, in the future, maybe we'll be able to approach this. The thing that we've always had the problem with is we don't have off-road land available. Stratford's overbuilt right now, so there's very few places where we can say, here's a two-mile trail off-road, where a lot of towns, Trumbull can do it, Bridgeport can do it, a lot of places, we don't have that option. So we are really forced, with very few exceptions, to create on-road routes. So we're just going to have to do it as safely as we can. And that's where I think everybody on the Greenway Committee is super focused on that because half of the 10 members are all bike riders. That was when we reconstituted it, I looked specifically for people who were bike riders who used Stratford's roads so that they had real, live experience to bring to the committee. Uh, they're not just talking about a line on a map. They actually ride these routes. So hopefully, that will inform us even better when we start looking at these. And hopefully, we'll be able to go through and send you guys an updated map that you can incorporate into the next P O C D. Uh, because that's really, believe me, I, you know, you're, you're learning right now. The P O C D is one of your greatest tools. So I want to make sure we're getting you the best information possible so that when you have to make judgments on that, and now I'm, now that I'm on zoning, it's the same situation where I am. So the more that we can help our land, our land boards, the better off we are. Let me just also make a comment that's kind of outside of everything. Complete Streets and Greenway is not a political committee. We are a working committee. We are, we have, in all my years on it, it has never been, it has always been a what's good for the town of Stratford kind of committee. So we work in a non-political way on this committee. Uh, and I, if you ever get a chance to come to one of our meetings, hopefully, we'll be back live soon, please, I welcome you. The other thing that I would like and ask here for, when I was chair, I appointed myself and two other members to be alternates on the Greenway Committee. I would love to see that happen again. If you want to just do one, or if you want to do two people and swap, swap, uh, responsibilities, that's fine. If you don't want to do that at all, I will be happy to continue sending you the minutes, or we can do both. Um, I would also like, as we produce things, to bring things to you because it's going to be up to you to say, this is our decision based on what the, um, Greenway Complete Streets people, our, our subcommittee is suggesting. Uh, it will give much more weight than we have. Uh, particularly if you send it, if you're sending it to Planning or Town Council, they will take that, and they did. When I sent them the, um, Complete Streets text and the Complete Streets ordinance, they took it seriously. Uh, they did the absolute right thing and it wasn't a political vote. So we can move us forward in a way that's for the best of Stratford, and I hope that we will continue working towards that. I will do everything I can to make that be the case. Um, we have 10 members, of which we have a six, we have to have six people in order to, in order to get a quorum. Um, we've been very good at doing that, which I think is great that we have people that are consistently in, interested. What else can I, what other information can I give you? We are working on other projects. We are looking to do a biking event for, um, uh, Stratford Day, where we're going to create a parking lot for bikes. So we're going to actually advertise, ride your bike to the Main Street Fair. And we're gonna, the, the Greenway Committee is going to become the parking attendants for a roped-off area. But one of the things that all of the members have agreed that we need desperately is we are an unknown entity to even people that live in Stratford. So we need desperately to come up with funding for us to create a map, even though it's going to say, this route anticipated 2022, this route anticipated 2023, this route in 2030. You know, we still need that because we want to get people riding on these routes, even if they're not marked yet. Because the terrible thing is that during COVID, there was a 600% increase in people riding bikes. And it was a shame because Stratford was not there to get lanes striped when everybody in town was riding bikes. I mean, I looked out my door every day and I saw people riding in my neighborhood that I'd never seen on a bike before. So hopefully, June is not too late to interest some of those people and to begin building it because that's what's going to help us. When, when Sus Smitha goes to MetroCog, they're going to say to her, is Stratford using their bike lanes? So we have to prove ourselves. Otherwise, it's going to go to Bridgeport, which is what's happening now, or it's going to go to Trumbull, which is what's happening now, or it's going to go to Milford. So if we want to be there in line to get the money, then we have to show an interest in our town. So partly, what I'm looking at doing is a marketing job. And that's not necessarily, you know, the, the hard grit of working with our town engineer, but that's part of what we, we are taking on as our requirement. I'm going to stop there because I would literally love to answer anybody who has specific questions. Yes, sir, Mr. Boyd?
Thank you for coming, Harold, and you are a godsend to all these committees, all the hard work you do. So if I hear you correctly, the shovel-ready project that needs to get done first would be from the train station to Barnum, or, and then...
No, actually, I, I didn't even mention the shovel-ready project that we are ready to go on.
Okay.
We are waiting for one final word from DOT.
Okay.
And that is going from Perry Street, across Main Street, across Broad Street to Elm Street, and then down Elm Street to Stratford Avenue, and then from there, down to Bird's Eye, across Bird's Eye, and over to connecting to our sole existing, um, piece of Complete Streets that we have. So that is all on road. So it's basically a striping job that, but it's taken us two years working with the DOT to get sign-off on that because it travels across Main Street, which is a state road. So getting their agreement on what we were doing took us a long, and thank Sus Smitha for sticking with it. But we're right on the edge of the final approval on that. And we've had the money in the bank for at least the last three years, four years. So we are ready to start that project for it to go to bid. Hopefully, that will go to bid within the next two months. Hopefully, that will be done before the end of summer. Because it's not a massive job once we start, it's a striping job.
Is that online? Can we see that proposal or possibility?
I don't know if we have that online, Sus Smitha.
Uh, Sus Smitha wants to speak, please.
Yes, um, so first of all, let's back up. Um, the one that you asked was for Complete Streets, I think. And the one that Harold Watson described was Greenway Phase Two path.
Yes.
So just to give you a background on this, um, in the past, there was Greenway Committee, there was Complete Streets Committee. These two were functioning separately. Greenway Committee was a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. At the time, when Mr. Watson was one of the Planning Commission members, I think it was former, um, Planning Commission Chair Pat Petuski that has ordered, um, you know, somebody from Planning to be a liaison with the Greenway Committee. At that, and the Greenway Committee was being managed by the town engineer, John Casey, David Killeen, who was the former town planner. And then there was Linda, I forgot her last...
Manos.
Manos, and who was acting as a secretary, but she was very good at what she did with the committee. Harold Watson served on that committee and it, they really did a great job in streamlining Greenway projects. They were reviewing Greenway, um, Phase Two drawings. Phase One is the existing Hurstetonic River Greenway that was built after 1979, whatever plan was made after that in 10 years that was built. And Phase Two is what Mr. Watson describes as, um, a route that is from Elm Street to Broad Street, uh, like right by Shakespeare property in front, and then taking a turn on Broad Street to the left and then intersecting with the town center at West Main and Broad. Because that West Main and Broad Street intersection is owned by DOT and managed by DOT, it was subject to a DOT review. So they worked on it really hard with the consultants, PSC Group, reviewing the drawings at 30% design stage, 60%, 90%. When the drawings were ready, the construction drawings were sent to DOT by the town engineer for that one last sign-off, uh, at West, uh, West Broad and Main Street intersection. DOT had a change of staff. For one year, we never heard back. We were asking and asking and asking, and there was no response. After one year, they said, we also figured that you're working on Complete Streets Phase One along Main Street from Harvey Place all the way to Barnum Avenue, right in front of Town Hall. So that is owned and managed by DOT altogether. So why don't we just review this project as part of that project and give you simultaneous approvals? Harold Watson was also part of the Complete Streets Committee. When, it was not a technical or formal committee of any boards or commissions. It was just a citizen advisory committee that was created by, um, my colleague Jay Hibansky, Planning and Zoning Administrator. And he invited interested, um, individuals, volunteers and bike enthusiasts like Harold Watson and Tom, I think Tom Dillon was part of it.
Yep, yep.
George Purham and all these people. And they worked on this Complete Streets plan and visioning, uh, which was funded by MetroCog at that time. So now, when Harold Watson was the Planning Commission Chair last year, I proposed to him, because when we advertise our agendas and minutes, for Planning Commission, it's a town-established commission. So I put it on the, uh, town clerk's board. The town clerk takes everything and she puts in her filing system. For Greenway Committee, that was filed as part of the Planning Commission because it was the sub, it is the subcommittee of the Planning Commission. But for Complete Streets, I had no place to put it because nobody knew where this should be filed. This was just a citizen advisory committee, but we still want to notify the public in a procedural way. Then I recognized the need to consolidate these two committees so we can start posting agendas, minutes, and meeting materials, um, in that filing system. So people who are interested can go and review, uh, the records. Mr. Watson took it upon him to create the bylaws for the Greenway and Complete Streets Subcommittee. And, um, he created it last year. He invited, uh, people who were interested to be part of that committee, to become members. We have, I think, nine members, Aileen? We have nine members who are permanent, and then we have alternates. Um, so the bylaws, the way they were written, um, is that you can have up to 10 members on that committee. In the past, when Mr. Watson was the Planning Commission Chair and when Ms. Pat Petuski was the Pla, the Planning Commission Chair, there was a liaison from Planning Commission to the Greenway Committee who was managing this process and who was part of that Subcommittee and reporting back to the Planning Commission. Now, Mr. Watson is also the Zoning Commission Chair, and he has other duties too. So maybe, it may not be possible for him to attend Planning Commission meetings every month. I am a town staff. I can report to you, but if you want a different perspective from a member, it is advisable to have a liaison from the Planning Commission who can be one of those 10 members serving on the Greenway Committee so they can report back to you on whatever they're working on. We have two important projects that are ready to go now, and we are waiting for DOT just to sign off. Just this morning, they, you know, I was checking with MetroCog, Metropolitan Council of Government Staff. They are the project administrators, uh, working with the town on this. And they're communicating with DOT, and I asked them the status, and they said, anytime later this week or next week, we should hear back on the approvals. And then, and once we get the 100% approval, we go into the construction and bidding phase. So those two projects are almost ready to go. But we have another project, like Mr. Watson mentioned, that is funded for preliminary design by the town. The town has appropriated $250,000 through CIP to do Phase Two from Barnum Avenue all the way to Paradise Green. And then we have construction money associated with it from DOT that was awarded to MetroCog to give to the town, which is $2.75 million. For that, MetroCog is actually working, uh, to hire a consultant to, you know, work on that second phase. So whoever is going to be part of this, uh, from the Planning Commission, will be working with Mr. Watson and his team on Greenway and Complete Streets Subcommittee to manage that process from the community's side and to work with the consultants like they worked with them in the Phase Two process of the Greenway when Linda was there and David Killeen was there. So that's the natural. It's a lot of history, I know.
Thank you.
Not to give you more work. There it is.
Does anybody else have any questions? Sarah?
So how did the nine people get on that committee? Because they're not, were they appointed, voted on?
They were, well, try to get 10 people on a committee. Uh, but it, as it turned out, almost half the people were from the original Greenway Committee, and almost half the other people were from the Complete Streets Committee. So we ended up really, truly combining the two.
How did they get on there originally?
Excuse me?
How did they get on each one originally?
Um, I can only tell you how I got on.
Okay.
I was appointed as, as, as an alternate, I believe, originally, like
Yeah.
four or five years ago. I took qualifications, I, I first took people who had been on the committee and were active workers. Then I took people who had a, who were either runners or bikers, who had a passionate interest in seeing things done. So those were the, my only two requirements that, and also that they weren't crazy because we have a really hard-working group of people. And I haven't seen any craziness in our group at all yet. So I hope it stays that way, but we, I, those were the two requirements that I, that I wanted. And for the most part, the people who had previous experience on the Greenway ended up with a three-year term. People that had, were new, ended up with a four-year term. So that we end up rotating.
Right.
We'll, we'll now go into a rotation cycle. We'll, we'll now go into a rotation cycle where we won't lose the whole committee. We'll lose a portion of the committee every so many years. So that's, I did my best to try to cover our bases on that.
And then I guess I should have asked this before coming here and fully understanding it. So Greenway are bike and running trails in town? And what is the definition of a complete street?
They're both really, S- Smitha and I argue about this all the time. In essence, they both reflect our network of multimodal transportation. So they reflect people who walk, people who bike, people who wheelchair, people who, you know, all of those kinds of things. So the, the aim of us is to design a system that encourages people to get out of their car. That's the whole aim. Eventually, we will be tying in bicycle facilities, which really are bicycle racks. We're gonna start a whole campaign eventually. We're gonna end up with mini parklets on street corners. We're gonna, those are the kind of things that get into complete streets. Cause Complete Streets says it's not just a bike lane or it's not just a street, it's the environment that you need to build to get people to come and use it. I've ridden with, I, 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 I've done several rides with a bike group out of Litchfield. They come all the way down here and ride Stratford's rail, our trail from downtown out to Short Beach, out to Long Beach, and then around the loop on Access Road. They are in love when they come here. You know, we trash our town all the time, but they were like in heaven that they had so much chance to see the ocean. You know, it really is beautiful when you're on a, when you're on a, on our little trails. So.
If I may add, when you look at greenways, they were like, uh, designed, um, to function as, um, alternative modes of transportation for, um, bicyclists, uh, to be accommodated along the coast. Like you have the East Coast Greenway, Housatonic, uh, River Greenway. So that had more regional and state connectivity. And it was mostly like giving that, um, access to the relaxation, recreation for citizens. But Complete Streets is a whole new movement. I was started in two thousands because of, um, uh, you know, reducing the carbon footprint, from shifting the mode of transportation from automobile oriented to multimodal. So it's more like managing mobility for all and, um, users of the road. So, um, Complete Streets has more like, you know, you want every street that you can to become functional for all users, but Greenway, you're looking at more like by the Housatonic River Greenway, although now we, the vision has shifted and now we are connecting those greenways internally, not just by the coast, but internally through Elm Street and to the Complete Streets, um, in the town center. So these are used interchangeably, but the way they originated was a different intent and purpose.
And I like to think of them as vision trails. The, the loop that goes down Elm Street is the best way to see the historic district. So you could convince someone to come and spend an afternoon going through the historic district on their bike and then going down to the shore. And that's a great afternoon for tourism. Doesn't cost us a penny. It, you know, I know that from the responses, people that come into town. But we also have, the East Coast Greenway runs on Stratford Avenue across Ferry Boulevard into, into Milford. So we do have connections that the more that we can use them, the better off we'll be. So maybe, Ms. Graham, you should think about joining our committee.
Um, does anybody else have any questions for Harold? Uh, so, uh, than- thanks, Harold and S- Smitha for adding everything. I ju- I have one just kind of question that would go along with the Greenway, you know, and the Complete Streets. So we're talking about bicycling, uh, and, you know, making it safer walking and, you know, uh, wheelchairs accessible. Um, you know, there's other things out there that are very popular these days, like one wheels, you know, the one-wheel skateboards or, uh, the, the electric scooters. Are those, would you deem those as the chair, as acceptable modes of transportation on?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes, definitely. Because they're on a hierarchy just below automobiles. Once you go below automobiles, then you go into, you know, what they don't want is combustible engines on.
So continuing along those lines, this recently passed where there was, um, golf carts. That was a pretty big deal. Golf carts, they don't go more than fifteen miles per hour, if, if they're electric versus gas.
Here, here is where we have our own discretion. If we wanted to pass a, a regulation that said no golf carts, we could. I, I would hesitate to do that.
Just, you know, representing lordship and it'd be an inquisitor.
I would hesitate to do that because you're getting someone out.
Right.
Something other than a car.
Right.
So I think that.
No, there's, it's just, just throwing it out there, just, you know, my, my own brain working here. Obviously, Greenway and the Complete Streets is a great project and I know how much you've put into it and we appreciate all of that. Also very familiar with the fact that, you know, by technicality, Planning Commission, you know, it's a subcommittee of the Planning Commission and I definitely think that we should be, um, active. And I realize your time i- is, you know, spread amongst a bunch of different things, but more so the, the Planning Commission being that we're attached to this committee, we should be involved with that. And we had mentioned before, Sarah Graham, I'd like to appoint Sarah Graham to the Greenway Complete Streets Committee. And then I also, I also want to respect everybody's time and, and, um, I'm going to ask that Alec, um, be, uh, you know, backup to her if, if need be. Um, is, is. Well, for, for now, we're gonna stick to the, uh, the elected side. I, I got it, but it just, uh, you know, at the end of the day, we're all a team and we're all working together.
Now, we are currently doing, the first Wednesday of the month, we do noon zooms or, so I don't know how long that's gonna keep, but we've been able to do that so far because our committee is relatively small. So hopefully we can keep doing that and then you're just taking a lunch hour. We're happy to see you eat your lunch while you do our meeting.
It's, it's definitely relevant and, um, we'd appreciate it and so I'm.
I think it'll be more productive. I totally endorse it.
So thank you and, and thank you, Sarah, for your time and Alec for offering to back up.
Hey, you got me to shave and clean myself up, so it was a good evening.
So, um, at this point, you know, again, thank you for your time. We appreciate, um, you coming in. We look forward to working for, with you. We look forward to collaborating for the POCD that was coming up, um, you know, the new maps and working with you on that.
There is one thing that the committee was really clear on is we need to think seriously about coming up with some kind of funding for us to do a logo design for the Stratford Housatonic Greenway, which is the state's official name of our greenway. We need to come up with a map redo, even with projected, even if we do a series of gray trails, but we need to do that to encourage people to start being aware of our map, but also to kick off the Elm that comes, the Elm Street section that comes by the end of the summer. Hopefully, I have no idea what the budget is on that, but that is an ask that my, all the members on the committee ask that I bring to you guys because you're the ones that have to do the request. It's a hard thing to write a grant for because most grants do not want to do signage or maps.
No doubt.
So that's something that really should be a CIP item if, I, it shouldn't be that expensive because it doesn't have to be a massive printing job. We can put that online.
There's certainly a lot of things to work on, uh, and absolutely we'll, we'll look into it and work with it.
We're working, we're trying.
Absolutely. And again, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, S- Smitha.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Aileen, I miss you.
Oh, sorry. Okay, um, thanks again. We're moving right along. Now we're, so this is the last topic on the agenda, um, line nine, Plan of Conservation and Development, POCD. There's a bunch of things that we need to talk about. We're gonna talk about the RFQs, which this is a project that's ongoing. We, we've had several bids in for, um, the updated POCD, which will be lay the groundwork for the next ten years. Just in this meeting, we've referenced the POCD on every single topic. That, there's a, there's a lot that goes with the POCD and, um, on every level, people refer to it. It's very important to, uh, Stratford, the future of Stratford. And as the Planning Commission, this is gonna be one of our biggest, um, projects that we're gonna see in the next few years. So, you know, it's gonna be some hard months working on it and we're all up for the task. That's why we're here. I'd like to just ask S- Smitha, um, you're very experienced with working with POCDs. You're experienced with, um, even the groups that have, um, responded to the RFQs. So, um, we don't need to go too deep into the RFQs, I don't think, but we should, um, at least just get an idea of what we're looking for and, and the task that's ahead of us.
So, um, you know, when I'm referring it as POCD, it means Plan of Conservation and Development. That is its nickname. So we often keep saying POCD and for a limit, it's like, what is POCD? But in general, um, it is nothing but a ten-year plan for a municipality. So by state statute, uh, section eight dash twenty-three, um, every municipality in Connecticut must prepare, um, adopt and amend their Plan of Conservation and Development at least once in ten years. Failing to do so, you, you become ineligible for any state grant funding that is out there. That is the first, uh, thing that the, you know, community loses. So, uh, Stratford, um, also gets funding from Housing and Urban Development, um, for, um, you know, Community Development Block Grant Program. You become ineligible if you don't get, um, to prepare a comprehensive plan, which is, I mean, POCD is also called a comprehensive plan. If you don't do that, you know, you are not going to become eligible. And the Complete Streets that we are working on, in the absence of a POCD, we can't document in our grant application that this meets the vision outlined in the POCD. So we get cut off from that funding. So it is a very, very important document. And the state statute, um, states that the Planning Commission is primarily responsible for preparing those, these plans in a timely manner. And it ha- it has to be ultimately adopted by the town's legislative body. In this case, the town council. There is a procedure involved in this where there will be a sixty-five day public review period at the end, uh, when the plan is prepared and then it has to be appropriately advertised legally. And there's a public hearing process and, uh, you know, there's a lot associated with this preparation of the P- POCD. And the community has to be involved in developing this plan. So, um, we, when Brian mentioned RFQ, we mean Request for Qualifications. So we, the town has set aside seventy-five thousand dollars in the current fiscal year and another seventy-five thousand dollars approved in the Five-Year Capital Improvement Program for the next fiscal year. So a total of hundred and fifty thousand dollars to prepare this plan. And we, we cannot just go hire any consultant. We have to advertise and request consultants to solicit their, uh, responses and interest in preparing such document. We advertise widely in New York, Connecticut, planning organizations and everywhere that we can and Connecticut Post. We got eight really good, solid responses from consultants. All eight are highly qualified, competitive, very experienced consultants. Now, why do we need consultants? Because this is going to be a laborious task. I mean, they, we have to set up meetings with the community. We have to engage the community on various topics. We have to meet with focus groups, stakeholders, and it's, it's more than a full-time job for one person. And the consultants also bring in a different perspective to the town. You know, by working in the same environment, sometimes we lose sight of what is out there. What are the best practices? What else could be done differently? And this is where I think a consultant can bring their expertise to us to open our perspectives to new way of doing things, which probably would bring better results. So we received eight responses. Then we requested Brian O'Connor as the Planning Commission Chair and, um, Paul Aurelia, um, to be part of this, uh, selection committee, along with, um, Mary Dean, who is the Director of Economic Development, who is my boss, and Jay, who's my supervisor, and then, um, Mayor Hoydick, uh, to be part of this selection committee. So we, um, boiled it down to four responses right now and those four consultants we may interview in the next few weeks. But in order for us to interview them, uh, we thought the first step would be to engage you today in a discussion about what is a POCD? Why is it important? What do you think are, should be our general goals and vision for this? So that we can select those consultants along those lines, like who have that kind of expertise and who can assist us with that kind of, uh, vision. So I have prepared a PowerPoint, um, slideshow and in the, we do not have the technical capability here, so I'm gonna walk through it page by page for you. Uh, the first two pages are just cover pages, so I'm saving time here. Let's go to the third page directly, which is, um, what is a POCD? Like I said, it's a policy statement regarding physical land development, planning process guided by the Planning Commission, updated at least one, once every ten years. The plan is more general, more of a long-term outlook and flexible. It covers a range of topics useful for citizens like housing, economic development, environment, uh, transportation, climate change, sustainability, um, you name it, you have it. The reason we should do, uh, this in such a thorough manner, based on my experience in the past, there was a POCD that another municipality had, but there was one line missing in it that said, um, that they could, um, you know, work on coordinating with the Water Pollution Control Authority, which has its own authority, uh, for waste management, uh, water pollution control in that municipality, and that we will partner with them when needed to secure grants. In the absence of that line, those people could not apply for a federal grant. And they said they wanted, um, you know, the grant administrators wanted them to demonstrate where in the POCD does it state that you have vetted this out before the community and that it was okay for the community to apply for a grant on your behalf and partner with you. There was no line in the POCD, they couldn't apply for that grant that year. That's how important it is and that's how much thought has to go in this. You have to look at the very minutest scale, but also look at the big picture. We can't be too specific because in ten years, anything can happen. Like COVID hit us, market went crazy for two years, everything went haywire. And so you can't really predict what happens in ten years unless you're really sure about the real estate market. So you try to keep it as general as you can, but you also throw in a lot of recommendations that cover every single item so that when you're doing your development reviews, like right now in Planning Commission, anything we review, we look at the consistency with the POCD. In the absence of con- uh, consistency, it's not legal to approve that. Zoning Commission looks at Planning Commission's, um, you know, directives on this and it, the zoning text amendments are all based on the future land use map of the POCD. So, you know, it is very, very important, not to scare you, but it's just, it, it, it's, it's a very important time in your lives to be able to do this for the town of Stratford. Now, I covered the next, um, slide. I said housing, jobs, historic and cultural important structures and places, environment, transportation, infrastructure, community facilities. These are all the topics that will be covered. The way we, I used to typically do this in my past, uh, for other municipalities. I worked as a private consultant and I also worked on the municipality's side. So the way we did is we worked with the town staff, we had focus groups, we had stakeholders. And for, for example, for economic development, we had a list of businesses that we would reach out to. We would arrange a workshop with them. We'd sit down with them to know their issues, what matters to them, what is not working out, how can we change direction in our POCD? And then we, you know, bring out, you know, bring out goals, objectives and policies. We present to the community, uh, and we have residents offer feedback on this. Then the Planning Commission reviews it every month. And then finally, a draft plan is prepared, advertised, put on the website for people to access and view it. We would open it up for an online survey, in-person survey as needed and know people's preferences on various topics. And that's how it is being done for all these topics. So you can imagine the workload that is associated for e- with each of these topics. Now the la- uh, the next slide, why update POCD? This is a very, very important, um, thing. This is a very, very important um thing to remember. On the top, you see that the P O C D informs zoning regulations, it gives a predictability to investors and developers. They know what the vision is for the community and how their development would fit into that vision. It guides the capital improvement program in some communities. Some communities tie the recommendations, like for example, Harold Watson just mentioned that we need more funding for signage. Maybe that's something that you incorporate as a recommendation, and then you request as part of the C I P or face it in, in the next few years for your request. It's helpful for grant writing, any grant you write, you have to show consistency with P O C D. It informs special planning studies. So if you have a corridor study, uh if the Plan of Conservation and Development states you need more thorough analysis of ferry boulevard traffic counts to determine if an on-road bike path can be accommodated on this route, that is a special planning study that stems from the P O C D. It is aligning with uh state statute eight dash twenty-three requirements, we cannot do this without that, so please, I request you to go online, look at what the statute is and print it out and keep it with you, I will also try to bring it when we start um working with a consultant. It also aligns with neighborhood plans, most communities do have neighborhood plans. Um sometimes, like in Florida where I used to work, these neighborhood plans used to help them determine where they could have traffic circles, speed bumps, safe routes to school, where there are infrastructure improvements that should be made, how they can foster a sense of community by having these plans. If you want to reintroduce that in the P O C D, I mean, we do have something called Community Character Areas in this plan that discusses various neighborhoods, you can do that um in the next update. It aligns and it has to align with the regional P O C D goals and the state P O C D goals. Sometimes you may differ in direction, uh and if you do, you have to state why, and where are you differing from regional P O C D or state P O C D? Generally, you have to show consistency, so you can't be too different. But if, you know, you know, you were to approach flood mitigation in a certain way than what the regional P O C D states, you have to mention why, so they amend their plans so that both are consistent and we get funded. It is uh aligning with the community vision, so we ask residents basic questions, what do you want in your community? What do you think is lacking? Why do you want to live here? Would you choose to live in this community for the next ten years? If not, why? I mean, somebody in by the waterfront may say, I want more waterfront recreation, and somebody in that neighborhood may say, I don't like waterfront recreation because it's too much noise, too much disturbance, too much traffic for me. We have to listen to both sides, and it's not just based on residents, if they say it's too much noise, I believe it. I have to go back and look at data that backs it up. What does my data say? Has this been a disturbance in other communities? How can, I mean, are there trends that you're observing that people are leaving this neighborhood? Houses are becoming vacant? Is the science proving it? I mean, is the data science proving it? And that's how you base it on facts, but you also look into people's preferences. It also aligns with a consolidated plan, which is the C D B G money, which I just referred, Community Development Block Grant Program. And of course, it informs the Planning Commission application reviews. We do three types of reviews, we do reviews for subdivisions, we do reviews for eight dash twenty-four, which is municipal improvements referred by the town council, we do reviews for zoning commission um directed text and map amendments for regulations. All three have to be consistent with the P O C D objectives. If anything proposed is not consistent, you would say it's not consistent, so we deny the application. That's how it relates to the P O C D. The next slide, I would go. How do we uh frame this planning process? First, we identify issues. We identify planning issues based on, you know, first things first, as a planner, I would look at what has worked in the past ten years. I look at this plan and I see what were our accomplishments. I can tell you right off, I look at this, I say Stratford Army Engine Plant is an accomplishment, it has progressed. Complete Streets is an accomplishment, progressed. Greenway is an accomplishment, progress. Where did we not progress? List all those things. What else has to, you know, con- continue? I mean, what should be a priority, based on what you've read in this plan and what should we be working on for the next decade? Are there new emerging issues? Like recently, state statutes, um I mean, state legislature has passed public acts on cannabis regulations, on accessory dwelling units. All these are recent emerging issues that we have to pay attention to in our next P O C D. Development of community vision, based on the issues identification and base, you go to the community, you report to them your facts, and then you you don't just look at Stratford, but you compare Stratford with other municipalities of Stratford size nearby, like Milford, you can for, come compare it with Fairfield, you compare it with Trumbull, see, where are we lagging behind? Are our residents in migrating or out migrating? Why are they doing so? And then you also um uh look at this from a regional standpoint, Metropolitan Council of Governments, the six towns, look at the state, compare with the state, how are we doing? And that's how you identify issues. And then you develop a community vision, and after the vision is placed, like somebody says, my vision for this community is that I would like to live in a community where I can um have vibrancy, livability to my town center, and there's an active waterfront recreation, there is multimodal transportation, and you know, I I want, you know, to be protected from the future floods, that's all the vision. Based on that vision, for each topic, we have a goal, what is an objective, what is a policy action that has to be undertaken for the next ten years? So we will have short-term actions, middle-term actions and long-term actions. Short-term meaning next one to three years, medium is like three to five or seven years, and long-term is seven to ten years. So what is our immediate priority? What is the medium priority? What is the long-range priority? Who is responsible for implementing it? Which departments have to work together? Who is supposed to fund this? And all these things are laid out in the plan. That's how we develop the final plan. Sometimes it also means that um residents have to get involved. It's not just the municipality that's driving this, but like citizen volunteers, like Harold today, who have to drive the Greenway Committee's um, you know, subcommittee. How can we involve and engage citizens throughout this process, not just in the plan? That's something to think about. Planning timeline, this is a long process. So we advertise the R F Q uh in December, we closed the R F Q process in January, we are right now looking at proposals and eliminating those that do not meet the criteria or the goals for the town. And we um shortlisted four, we would move with the consultant selection this month and next month. Hopefully by April first, we would have a contract in place with the preferred consultant. And we would be working on this for nearly a year, starting from April to May. Every month, the consultant will come and work with us as part of the P O C D update item under other items on our agenda. Now, why? Because not everybody can attend community meetings, not, you know, if you're talking to one part of the town, the other part of town may not know it sometimes, but when we are doing as part of a planning commission meeting and reporting back, it's televised, it's taped, anybody can look at it later on and understand where the next meeting is, what has been discussed, and what are the next steps for this process. From June to September, we have to follow the statutory timeline of sixty-five day review period, and we have to move forward with the town council adoption ultimately by September twenty twenty-three. Because the last plan, which is this one, which is current one, was adopted in December twenty thirteen. So exactly by December twenty twenty-three, we should be done, and we are giving ourselves two mo- two months of extra time, just in case things go, don't go as planned. That's it.
No pressure. Uh, whew, thank you. Um, yeah, the, and and again, just to, there's a lot of people that are new here and um it's a big project, it's obvi- you know, it's the groundwork for, again, for what um a lot of the decisions that are made surrounding land use, you know, that are gonna refer to this. So um during the selection process, there's y- y- you know, there's some mild pressure because it's, all all of the groups that have put bids in are very, very qualified and have and have done it before. But to narrow it down, we need to understand, you know, at least at a high level, what uh Sir Smith was talking about, things that are really good for the town, things that are um that, you know, we'd like to see improvement on. Um and also, I get a pul- you know, have a pulse to the people, what they wanna see um, you know, overall. Um again, I use the word high level because the, you, we're not, we're not looking to say we're gonna do this, you know, for everything, it has to be done this way and it's gonna be this, that's not the the point of it, it's to lay groundwork and outline, you know, a kind of funnel ideas to overall achieve what we're looking in the town of Stratford. So I, to put everybody kind of on the spot, um I I wanna go around the the horn here and just, you know, if you have one or two ideas that uh you, something you like, you wanna preserve, or something you wanna see as a new um, you know, project on the horizon, it's just, just something, again, high level, just to get the conversation, the dialogue going, um because it's probably gonna be a little bit uncomfortable, I'll be the first person to go, and that, we'll s- we'll start off that way. Um, you know, um so, you know, and again, it doesn't have to be where, exactly where you live or represent, but um something about me is I I love the beach and I use the beach a a lot, and I know a lot of the people in the town of Stratford, it's one of our big, you know, one of our biggest draws. So um Long Beach, to me, is something that could use some work. Um, you know, if you reference the former P O C D, it, Long Beach is mentioned numerous times in numerous different ways, uh it goes along with conservation, um you know, making sure that we're the, you you know, protecting our town from flooding because of rising tides and and things like that. Um and just an overall, y- y- you know, appeal to it, you know, right now, Jersey barriers um blocking the sand, you know, wouldn't be that bad of an idea to maybe um do a seawall or something like that, it hasn't been paved in a while, may, and and it floods when it, when it rains. That's something that I, you know, for me, I would like to see, like to see an overall improvement, and um now that, y- y- you know, that we have this awesome, you know, walkway that goes out to Pleasure Beach, you know, I don't know if it's possible or feasible and it is protected, animals that, um is there some project that you could do where you incorporate the greenway, which had been mentioned, doing something like this, like a boardwalk that goes out to Pleasure Beach, where you can utilize it for, not only, it's only gonna be preserving, y- y- you know, the natural wildlife there, if you could do it without obstructing it, but it gives another way, uh a a destination spot for people to take a long walk, I don't know. Um so there's some work, even just down to uh maybe a bathroom with running water. Um, you know, I don't know how possible it is, but it's something that would probably um increase the, just the overall sense of that particular beach. Um, you know, another thing we ta- uh the Army Engine Plant, i- it it comes up time and time again, and I go, what are we gonna do with it? Well, we know um a lot about it, that it's, y- you know, the ownership is actually federal and through the army, but um working with that location and how I can, we can finally use it for, you know, a mixed use of um, you know, restaurants, housing, uh entertainment, and just taking advantage of the waterfront, you know, it's, the, we're, the, we're not building new beaches, where, so we, and we're not building new waterfronts, we gotta take advantage of what we have and preserve, conserve and um utilize it to the best we can. So those would be two ideas, I guess, that I would throw out there, I have many more, but it would only have a couple, uh, you know, we don't have all night, so start with you, Mr. Vacole, if you don't mind, just give us, yeah, just.
Yeah, and I'm pig- uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, on uh piggybacking on some of your ideas, that Army Engine Plant, I would like to see, maybe like the ferry to Long Island, go there, instead of like when people complain or say to me, we go to Long Island, it's beautiful, you get off in Poor Jeff, and then they come over here, and I'm not knocking Bridgeport, but they get off over there and there's like nothing there, you know, for them to go to, where if we develop the Army Engine Plant to something similar to maybe Poor Jeff with shops and restaurants and things for the kids to do, maybe miniature golf there, playgrounds, it'll be a nice attraction for the town. And to see the ferry boat go over there and go back and forth between Poor Jeff and Stratford would be a nice, I think, um, thing for this town. The other thing is, like, uh, my wife brought this one up for the beaches, you said, she said, how about having um rentals for umbrellas? I'm not a beach person, so, but she said, you know, it'd be nice, maybe if they had some beach rentals, and then piggybacking on Long Beach, maybe having a, something there for them to eat, like a place to eat, um the bathrooms would be a big plus to have that, I'd like to see that. And um more entertainment places, you know, for the kids, that's what I think, you know, like to maintain the playgrounds in this town, um the ponds, maintain the, you know, Worcester Pond, Clover Pond for the kids, you know, my grandson go down there, they fish, they enjoy that, so I'd like to see him to, you know, keep it clean, keep it going, um and then to preserve, you know, the outside of it, around it. Shakespeare Theater, um I would have loved the winery there, but that's just me, you know, but uh, you know, I'd like to see it used for, yes, Shakespeare-type things, but maybe they could open it up to other things, you know, having some concerts there, I'm not saying they're gonna have, you know, like uh amphitheater, but, you know, different types of music, maybe country music, maybe rock and roll, maybe, you know, besides the Shakespeare, to attract more people. You know, I know people enjoy the Shakespeare, but there's other things that, you know, some people might not like, but that may be bringing different type of crowd to do something, you know, more diverse for Shakespeare Theater. Um, you said the Army Engine Plant, we talked about that. So um basically, you know, I would have loved to see in the center of town, um maybe some more restaurants and shops over there, I know they had passed it for condos, but I would love to have seen, you know, like you go to Fairfield and um the place is always jumping over there, no matter how many restaurants are open, they're packed. So we have some nice restaurants here, but I'd like to see maybe some more added on and maybe some um different things, you know, for, for um, you know, shops and everything for the people. So that's just a few of my ideas. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's great. Uh, do you have some, a comment on?
I can piggyback off what he was saying and share some ideas.
You can bring it out of the rotation, we'll go ahead, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, so to piggyback, like I said, piggyback on what um Commissioner Vacole was saying was um, at the beaches, better walking paths, and that kind of goes along with greenways and things that was mentioned earlier, just kind of like, a girlfriend of mine, she goes to um, over to the Milford Beach to walk, I'm like, just go to Shore Beach, but there's not good walking paths, so um, and then along with the Stratford Center, just more walkability and parking, so that when it does thrive, people have a place to go and walk and to and from, and I think that's coming about with the discussion earlier as well. Um, as far as neighborhoods go, safe walking to schools, um because I know my neighbors, if you're less than a mile from school, there's no bus. So safe walking paths for the kids to and from school within their neighborhoods. Um, and then I was given the idea of rather than more playgrounds, because there's plenty of them in town, but an outdoor fitness park. Um, and there's a company that builds them and and all that, so, um, and then to fix up the elementary school fields, so.
All great ideas, um we're gonna cut back to Mr. Aurelia, please.
Okay, most, uh, some of them were mentioned, but I'll, I'll say I'm, I'd like to see our open space protected and developed when it can be. Our playgrounds, parks, Worcester Park, a lot of places uh uh in need of a lot of repair, I I don't, not sure we do a great job of that, I'd like to see a little more emphasis on that. Um, I think um intelligent use of what available open land we have left for development when it comes to housing. Need to make sure we provide housing for all income levels, uh make sure that when we do approve housing, we um include things like sidewalks for safe transportation in in developments. I know for years, the, sometimes they were doing develops- developments without sidewalks, it was cheaper for the contractors, but uh I think uh the way things are going away from automobiles, uh and it's the way our P O C D is kind of designed, I think things like sidewalks are important. Um, and and just, again, I'm I'm a big proponent of saving uh open space, intelligent development of of our land that we have available, um and uh, you know, that 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 came to mind when we did the moratorium. land that we have available, and, you know, that came to mind when we did the moratorium on the self-storage facilities. You know, we have X amount of land available, do we want to have every piece of land we have with a self-storage facility? And I don't think that, I don't think we want that, so, that's kind of a few ideas for me.
And that's great.
Yep.
That's what we're, just, high level, and that's awesome, thank you. William, if you don't mind.
Certainly. William Boyd, Commissioner, Zone Two. Piggybacking off what Paul said, housing, a plan of conservation and development, you can't plan for complete streets, greenway, if there is no people here. And what's happening, there's not enough housing. People have kids, their kids go to college, they come back home, then they have to move. They can't stay in town. So the people you're hoping to attract can't be here. So we have to build, as you were saying, more affordable housing, some of it affordable, but just simple housing. That could be done, there's lots of open spaces in town that we are, Stratford, to me, has a lot of open space that has been conserved, but there are open spaces that might have to be used, but based on a plan of conservation and development, should be planned well, so they're conserved, but they're planned well to make everything work. It's not open space, but it's space used well, that it's open space and you live there, there can be a partnership between the two. The other thing, a big issue in Stratford is flood mitigation. Our P O C D has to address our burgeoning flooding issue. If we're going to have people here, we're going to have, you know, biking and walking, they can't be flooded. They have to have sidewalks. Well, those sidewalks flood when there's just simple rain, like, wait a minute, I'm riding an electric bike, ooh, I got electrocuted in the water. You have to have, you have to have the infrastructure that's safe to then build all these wonderful things. So flood mitigation is huge. And I don't, I'm not as well-versed, I know it's, a lot of it in the south part of town, the South End, and in Lordship. I'm not so much sure about the northern parts of town, if it's as bad, I know there are pockets, but flood mitigation's huge. Army Engine Plant, it's like, I don't know, it's like Groundhog Day, do we keep talking about it, do we not talk about it? That solve all, solves all our ills, but we can't do anything with it. And then my other question, I was going to be brief with that, is can we use parts of the existing P O C D and build on it, like, some of it's still relevant, or we haven't used yet? So we don't have to recreate this whole thing, but we can update it and use the best pieces of it?
Yes. And that's definitely a part of it, is, and like Sussmita alluded to earlier, there's certain things that you see in the P O C D that have not been accomplished, and we want to, you know, when we're developing this, we want to point those out and keep striving to it, just like the Army Engine Plant, it's not, it's not Groundhog Day, every, talking about it keeps it in the forefront and it's progress that we're looking for. Nothing is done overnight, there's the old saying, Rome wasn't built in a day, and that's where we're at, you know, and we have to just, we have to keep pushing, we've got to keep pushing forward, so.
Right. And that, my last one, I forgot, with housing, we were talking about relaxing some of the zoning regulations to where people can build on to existing homes, so that would satisfy a lot with housing as well, if that scene you can build on to their house, could refurb the garage or, but our zoning laws are so strict that unless you have a hundred-foot front, if I understand it correctly, if you don't have a hundred-foot front, you can't subdivide. You go to Stanford, you can have a twenty-foot front and they've subdivided. I think it's too much, but there's got to be a way in between where there's a lot of space that can't be used simply because our zoning laws.
Sure, sure. And, you know, you mentioned Stanford, and again, you've been in more meetings than I have, you know, and there's often said, staying with the consistency of Stratford, you know, so that's part of it, is everything's got to stay consistent, within the consistency, we want to preserve, conserve, and then also advance, so everything.
That's kind of a oxymoron, you can't build and conserve at the same time. Some, you've got to relax, one, it's got to be a.
I agree.
A marriage with the two, you can't do both.
It's, it's, that's the whole point, I think it's a difficult task, that, you know, and you're absolutely right, and, you know, it's, that's what we're tasked with, is to do exactly that, believe it or not, so that's, you know, we'll work together and we'll work through it. Do you guys have a couple of ideas you want to just, again, high level, just to?
Tammy Lynn Morris, alternate.
Thank you.
For me, I live on Nichols Ave, so this is just something I'm on every day. And I'm in between Barnum Ave and Nichols School. There is a bad accident there, at, once a month. Once a month. What happens is, you're sitting at one of the lights, and you come up Nichols Ave, and it's like a little hill, and you come around a corner and you're like, ooh, I'm free, I can go really fast. But you can't, because there's a light there and there's a school zone and hillside, you can't see because of the cars parked. Literally, Friday night, my neighbor's car was totaled by a drunk driver, at three o'clock in the morning. And I'm not exaggerating, I have tried very hard to get some stats, like to say, look, Mr. Solano died in my neighbor's driveway. It's really, really bad, and I believe, I'm not, I don't live near Second Hill Lane, but I believe there's an area near Second Hill Lane is the same thing. So for, it's not as colorful, and I agree with everything everyone said, but that's something that's, I'm dealing with like every day.
And that's a hundred percent part of the P O C D, again, maybe not just that isolated, but full, all of the town, traffic flow, that's, it's, everything is a part of it, and, again, relates back to Harold Watson and the greenways, and, you know, what you said relates to Sarah, what Sarah had mentioned about safer ways to get to school and smaller, so they're all connected, and all the ideas, they're good.
I know it's really micro.
No, no, but it's, but you can see.
On a bigger scale, right. And, I mean, the sound of an accident is not a crash, it's a pop. I hear it all the time.
I hear, yeah. Thank you, thank you. Do you have anything you would like to add?
I do, yes. Brian Sturbis, alternate.
Thank you.
I would like to add, I think it's going to be really important with this P O C D project, that we keep everything in lines with the uniqueness of what Stratford is, like historically. I don't think we want to make Stratford Post-Road Milford, even though it looks good for economic development, I just think it would kind of distract from what this town actually is, and I think focusing on outdoor activities and things of that nature, like we talked about down near the beach, and I also think, on a selfish note, if we can do something over at Roosevelt Forest with mountain bike trails, I mean, I know, and you were talking, looking at other towns, looking at Trumbull, not many people know this, but they have one of the most technically challenging mountain bike trail in the whole East Coast. And you get people from all over the place traveling there, just to, you know, with big groups and can, and clubs and things like that, to come down to the town as well. So I just don't think it's just on one side, outdoor activities, we can be looking at with beaches, I really think looking at everything as a whole is going to be really important, in my opinion.
And, you know, you're probably the, maybe the first person that's mentioned Roosevelt Forest, so I appreciate that, because forest is sure, and, no, and absolutely, there's opportunity with Roosevelt Forest as well, and, you know, mountain bikes or even the greenway. Harold had mentioned earlier that there was no place in Stratford that, you know, we have open space that we could have bicycle routes, and Roosevelt Forest is a pretty large acreage of land that we could also add to places that you could have bicycle routes and walking, and the same concept as I use for the walking out to Pleasure Beach is, you know, you're using, it's related, you know, Roosevelt Forest as well. So with that being said, everything that everybody said was related in some way, some form, you know, talking about playgrounds, talking about people, connecting it to downtown, creating down, you know, a unified downtown that's inviting to everybody. You know, playgrounds, outdoor workouts, like those, somehow, they all connect, you know, all the parks, they're all connected, and it's good that we did this, and you could see how the ideas are going to start forming together with other people's ideas that are going to come in and it's going to add to it, so.
And Mr. Chairman, I have one question, it might be for you or Sussmita. How does the impending airport sale impact our P O C D? That's ours, but it's not ours? It's, that's a tricky one, too, and is that part of our P O C D?
The airport is located in Stratford, it is subject to Stratford's land use policy and procedures and reviews by the zoning commission, Board of Zoning Appeals. So even though it is owned by Bridgeport, because of its location in Stratford, we are looking at a physical land use development, and this plan is for physical land use development, so you can review it in that lens, and, you know, probably provide some guidance through the P O C D.
So even though we won't own it, we still?
Well, we don't own any private properties, too. We guide them in terms of zoning, right? We tell them that housing is allowed in the zone, and in the zone, it's, mixed use is allowed. So there is some discretion for this town to say, airport can do these things, but airport must adhere to these mitigation strategies, like the flood mitigation, which is very important, I think, for the airport to focus on. And that's something you can state in the P O C D. Mr. Chairman, if you may allow me to speak for two minutes, I will just finish it up and then.
Of course you can.
So based on what I heard today, if I were to, you know, you know, if I were the chair and if I were to think of this, I'm just suggesting one of the approaches, because you're all so new. It doesn't mean that you have to stick to that, but the whole point of this exercise today is to figure out what approach this commission would take in developing this P O C D, what sort of a consultant should we look for, and how should we engage that consultant with the town? So I heard Mr. Brian O'Connor say he has interest in waterfront vision development. I heard Alec Vacola say he's more interested in economic development, whether it's Town Center or Army Engine Plant. Just so you know, Army Engine Plant has a development agreement in place, there's not much that you can do right now with that, but it's, his development is the key goal there, but also economic development for other areas of the town. If I heard Paul Aurelia correctly, he said he has more interest in open space and conservation and parks. Sarah Graham said she's more interested in infrastructure, bike trails, sidewalks. William Boyd said housing, but we already have a housing plan that was done last year, which is fairly new, which can be incorporated into the P O C D, but you also said you were more interested in zoning amendments. So zoning and housing are your topics of interest, and flood mitigation and climate change. Mr. Sturbis said historic and cultural resources. And Ms. Morris said traffic, public safety, transportation. So these are all elements of the P O C D, if you look at it. So maybe each person can become a leader or a manager of that topic and that focus group, and dive deeper into the details of that topic. When the consultant comes on board, look at the data and, you know, get involved with the meetings that are focused on those topics, with the focus groups, and guide the outcome of the process. That could be one way you can do. Or you all can work together as a group on, you know, you're still going to work as a group on every single topic, but you all look at everything together comprehensively on every single topic. That's an approach you can take. You may want to say, we want consultants who have a strong background in coastal resiliency. We may be looking at that piece as an important piece in our selection process, because now you have said the most important priority or top three priorities are this. So we have consultants who have subconsultants who are specialists in real estate and economic development. There are subconsultants who are very good at urban design, so maybe you might say, I look at this plan, I think it is not as visual as it should be. So half of this I can't understand, because I can't illustrate those concepts to my neighbors or I can't visualize it in my head, so maybe it should be more visual. So we will look at consultants with urban design expertise on this. So what is it that you expect out of this? That is, maybe you should take two minutes to think, or maybe you can email us back, because this is televised and taped, I don't want to give out the results to the consultants. Maybe you can email me back and say, I think we should do it this way. And I will consult Brian O'Connor and Paul with those responses.
And with that being said, that's what I meant to ask. Each consulting comes with a certain, you know, lean or bend. Do they provide you with some of the projects they have done in cities they've worked in?
Yes.
So you can kind of get an idea of, oh, that's kind of what we're looking at, and are you leaning toward that consultant from that standpoint?
Yes. I mean, for your information, I can share with you in your emails, those four consultants that we are looking at, the PDF of those RFQs that we received. You may look at those and say, there's some that is very strong in community engagement, and I think that is more critical, because you could have people organizing behind your back, I can tell you that, like, totally different from what you're trying to convey. And say, the planning commission is going ahead and putting accessory dwelling units throughout the town, they're going to change the fabric of this community, there will be no good quality schools in the town, and then the last thing you want is to be blamed in the media for something that you're not part of. So you need a good consultant with that skill to manage community. So I am going to share those as PDF tomorrow, and maybe you can all talk to Brian, and Brian can convey it to me, I'm sorry, I keep calling you Brian on the record, Mr. Connor, and then he can convey it to me as to what your preference is. Okay? Sounds good.
Yeah, and then, and just, again, going along with what you're saying, I mean, there's obviously, there's not one narrow aspect that, and again, it's a collective, the point of the P O C D is a collective to look at all, you know, so.
And that is the structural requirement.
Right, it's looking, so not to make, you know, it's going to, it looks at everything we've touched on, it does, we are looking into it, and, you know, my opinion is that it should, the candidate that wins the bid should have the most experience in all of those, that, you know, and that's how our town operates, is we look at the forest, I mean, it says it, forests for sure, so it's, to sure, it's on both ends and everything in between, so, you know.
I think it's more like you look at those from the lens of what questions you may have to ask.
Yes.
That you don't see in those, in print.
Right, right. And you and I can work together on, yeah, just a, you know, a top, a way to ask the So ultimately, we'll have those emailed to Sussmita, and then we'll, Sussmita will send out an email to everybody, asking, rephrasing the question, and then, if you don't mind, just respond to it, and we'll review it and use it, use it on the field essentially, with the committee that's.
Just one small procedural aspect, though, I will send out an email, but when you're sending back your response, just directly email to me, because it will be like you're acting as part of ex parte.
That's correct.
Communication as a commission, and also you have a training tomorrow, just so you know.
As a reminder, and everybody should have gotten an email regarding that, and a calendar reminder for tomorrow night, for our training, so that should, you know, hopefully you all can attend it. It's going to be good information, necessary, and knowledge is power, so we're going to just grow, grow together. You know, I think this is a good start for the P O C D, you know, we had some great ideas. Again, I see, you know, some, you know, overlapping ideas, which I think we're going to see a lot, which is good, unification and great teamwork, and that's what we're going to, you know, be required for the next few months, so thank you. At this point, I don't, we don't have any more on the agenda, and I think we've covered enough for, of the P O C D for tonight, so I'm going to look for a motion to.
Motion to adjourn, oh, William Boyd, District Two, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, guys.